I believe this is for the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission of my first school is to have that goal, to match the lives of the children, to participate in critical thinking skills, and to pay with instructive practice and collaborative school and community partnership.
T. Hill.
Present.
Ms. Thompson.
Present.
C. Hill.
Here.
Ms. Terrell.
Present.
Ambrose.
Present.
Ms. Shaw.
Here.
Donna Stavis.
Any question wishing to address the board, I admit it's on the agenda, but it's someone that I will discuss the discussion. This is just a statement would be the two minutes per person, a total of thirty minutes will be allocated because of this comment. All comments about item one of agenda will be held until the business statement at the end of the week. Items related to personnel issues will be redirected to the appropriate administrator. Item M, resenting motion to approve the regular Board of Education grant for May twenty 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 four, June fifth, and May fifth, oh, in the middle of October, nine hundred eighteen thousand five hundred sixty-two dollars, that is not set as the motion.
Second. Motion by Ms. Shaw, taken by Ambrose, Ms. Shaw.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
T. Hill.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
C. Hill.
Yes.
Donna Stavis.
Yes.
Item D, communication. Item H, informational item. Item I, or here. Item J, administrative report, Dr. Billhouse had it for us.
We are going to administratively prepare and we're going to present my, our agenda in a year. How important is to kind of show what we've done this year if you didn't know or were unaware, but let's just see what we did. And yes, Lila Miss Foley Hill has joined us tonight. She's standing there from the cameras. So we need to, do we need to dim the lights?
Yeah. I'm sure that's out of my head.
Well, she had it.
As you know, every year we like to showcase what we've done, face the hand, just to reiterate if you don't know.
So the highlights from this year, we did implement our new ELLA curriculum, which was holding the bridge into reading and into literature for seventh and eighth grade. We awarded, we were awarded the teacher vacancy grant.
Well, beyond that, we looked into the new financial literacy curriculum because Heritage has a lot of specials, so we were trying to find a special that was more applicable to our kids to use in future and was telling them that economics a little bit, so we went to financial literacy. So that is something that we piloted in January, we found some success, so we're going to implement it full time for next school year. But the added benefit for us was that the actual individual who developed the program came out and trained our staff and even taught a couple of classes for our kids. As Dr. Lowe was saying, we've also did math, science curricula selected for next year. We had to experiment with science because the patient, you know, Nathan Hale has been without science for several years, so we are looking to bring it back. Another thing is that we were awarded the teacher vacancy grant, so that's a grant that I wrote for early in the year and we were allowing X amount of funds to grow our own. So what, you know, just to fill our own vacancies that we have, so we have a couple pair of professionals that that kind of filled in the cell to a really good sum, so we've got them into universities, working on getting their degrees of teachers, but to do that they get to go into a contractual agreement with the district, but we are looking to, so we have five individuals that we're looking to, and we're paying for their entire college education so they can be a teacher. On top of that, we finished, thank you, Mr. Schrader, our first year of our three-year construction project, and thank you, Ms. Cambridge, she's been really good to not fatherly harm me about the construction in this building. The next thing we did, and Dr. Lowe's and everyone is so proud of this, you know, we are part of the Cow Ridge Conference and we're part of Cow Ridge Conference academically and for our sports, so that's our new area, our basketball, football, and Heritage Middle School, we dominated, we won in every single field. But more importantly, what I'm super proud of is that we placed for the first time ever in Sunny Brook's history at the South Suburban Math Bowl. Come on, y'all, you gotta get it up, you have to. Fifth and sixth place, they placed third, seventh and eighth grades placed second, and let me just tell you how huge that is. Every year I always go to the middle school, I send Dr. Lowe to the loop, elementary, to the elementary, and I'm always pumping the kids up because when we placed, you understand, we finished second over Palo Hills, over Orland Park, and a lot of times our kids go there and they feel a little bit, they don't have the confidence that I would think they need to do well, but this year we talked about it, we pumped it up, they went in, they did the thing, and they finished, I can't make you understand, I accept their craft. They did second and third grade, to see the joy, I'm so proud of them, and I just can't wait to see what we do next year, but I have to give it up to Ms. Sarah Hemington Washington and Ms. Mendez, because they put the work in, and our kids came, they showed out, they did.
Yeah, everyone, they did wonderful, it was exciting. This was our first year offering advanced math from grades third through eighth, and it really did pay off, it was great. We introduced the step-up program at Nathan Hale, which is for students who are a little more advanced, they can go to the next grade level if they have the skills necessary to be able to be successful. Nathan Hale had a lot of introductions of new clubs, we had new events, we had our math night, which was wonderful, we had our first Nigerian heritage night, and then we had a science day at Nathan Hale, just to kind of reiterate what Dr. Pettis said again, we haven't had science in almost ten years at the elementary school, and so we wanted to really just kind of put it back into place because we all know science is very important.
And kudos to Mr. Ken and his team, because when I say we did science day, we did it all day from eight to three, it was great.
Wonderful.
The step-up program, let me just clarify that, that's not if you're in second grade and you get promoted to third grade, no, you may have, you may be very advanced in reading, some kindergartners enter kindergarten and they can read, so why would we then leave them in a classroom where kids are just not learning, either sounds identifying all their letters, so we just moved them on to first grade, just so they can just continue to go from good to great and not cycle them in the right way. So demographic, in case you don't know what Sunny Brook looks like, this is what we look like, we had five hundred and thirty-three students enrolled in Nathan Hale, four hundred and ninety-four, so a total of one thousand twenty-seven students attend our schools. Of that, you have one hundred and forty ELL students, and those are the kids, so English is their second language, and we have one hundred and ninety-one special education students in our district.
Curriculum guides are updated yearly to ensure that we're meeting the needs of our students based upon the Illinois State Standards. We do two vertical alignments throughout the year where teachers get the opportunity to not only work amongst the grade level, but they get to work with the grade level above and the grade level below, just to ensure that we're, you know, meeting each grade level and where they need to be, and/or just to provide that information as to this is where our students left off, this is the skills that we're at, here's where we probably should start the following year.
Standard-based grading, so as you know, we are looking to move towards standard-based grading, we're looking to bridge that gap between a homeschool connection, because a lot of times for parents, especially the elementary level, get the report card, they still ask us, what can I do to help my child? So when you start doing standard-based grading, it's more specific, say, my child is struggling with decoding, my child is struggling with fluency, number recognition, but before we could do that, we have to get our whole community, we all need to be on one core. So in February, we hosted our very first Karen University, we talked to the parents about that, we have a list of parents who want to be on our committee, because that's going, our goal for next school year is to develop a report card, but we just can't develop our own report card, we need a report card with parent input so everybody can understand it, so that is where our committee is going. We, as an administrative team, there are other schools in our area that were more like towards Orland, that we collectively went to go visit with their curriculum department, meet their teachers to talk about their hiccups, their pitfalls, what we can expect and what we can do to go from good to great. We looked at, we put together a district handbook already, that's not to say it's a living and breathing entity, but we had to have a template of something to work with. So we've developed a handbook, and we're still doing staff development. I think our biggest major focus now is how to grade students, because it's still a grade, but people still want their child to be recognized for honorable, so those are some of the things that we have not worked out yet, and because we have not worked that out, we're not going to introduce it next school year, because when we do roll it out, we really wanted to be a lot smaller than what I perceive the hiccups to be for promise.
End of the year student survey, so we like to do a survey at the end of the year just to see where our students were at and what they had thought about the year, so for third grade, we do a third through eighth grade, for third grade, favorite class is math, they want to learn more about math, their favorite special is gym, and they would like to see cooking and/or steam was part of what this survey said, they both had about fifteen responses for both cooking and steam. Fourth grade, math was their favorite class, they wanted to learn more about math and science, favorite special was in between gym and music, and they wanted to do more cooking.
Everybody wants to cook.
Fifth grade, math class again was their favorite class, they wanted to learn more about math, gym, and they wanted recess and free time, and I ain't mad at them. Sixth grade, science was their favorite class, they wanted science, but more like dissecting, gym, and then they wanted free time or time to kind of catch up, which I thought that was interesting, and there was a whole lot of students that put catch-up time, so I'm like, okay, I like that. Then for seventh grade, it's social studies, they wanted to know more about the human body, gym, and they said nothing, they were very happy with the specials that we currently have. And then eighth grade, their favorite class was social studies, they wanted business and finance, and I do believe that has a lot to do with our financial literacy that we had put in, gym, and then they too wanted cooking.
So what we do with the, we do this every year, we're starting to see some similarities from year to year, but in all honesty, these kids were certain, so we kind of need that, well, kind of, we still do need their input, and so we just take a look at this and we try to see what we can do to make it some more invigorating learning experience for them.
They did want cooking before, and Mr. Kent, one of his clubs that he did put together this year was a cooking club, so we did care our students and we did do our best to meet their needs. ELL, so our ELL department, we had three of our parent bilingual academy committees, that's what that means, the back, our CPAC, fourteen point five percent of our students have are ELL students, which means English is their second language, and then we communicate currently right now to sixty-three of our student families that are not English in their native language, and currently right now, our languages are English, Spanish, and Arabic. And yes.
So what's the ELL? We put a lot of work into the ELL program at Nathan Hale, and kudos to Ms. Kathleen Speng, Ms. Lauren Blount, and Ms. Hill and Ms. Lopez, so what we did, or what they did, was put together a little video to show you, just showcasing all the hard work they did this year.
These are the days I will remember. These are the faces I need most. Everything changes, but I'll keep forever. These days I will remember. These days I will remember. Still got that trophy that says second place. Still got that breakup letter from my old flame. And I know it's been too long to recall it right, but you don't forget the goodbyes, and you don't forget the good times. Still got that scar from my one and only fight. Still remember when your father left and we drove all night. And I know it's been too long to recall it right, but you don't forget the goodbyes, and you don't forget the good times. No, you don't forget the goodbyes, and you don't forget the good times. These are the days I will remember. These are the faces I need most. Everything changes, but I'll keep forever. These days I will remember. These days I will remember. Still got that blanket from when you were born. That night love hit you like a heavy storm. And I know it's been too long to recall it right, but you don't forget the goodbyes, and you don't forget the good ones. No, you don't forget the goodbyes, and you don't forget the good times. These are the days I will remember. These are the faces I need most. Everything changes, but I'll keep forever. These days I will remember. These days I will remember. These are the days I will remember. These are the faces I need most. Everything changes, and we're not together. These days I will remember. These days I will remember. These days I will remember. You know it's time to go, but you just wanna hold on. Hold on sometimes, you know it's time to go, but you just wanna hold on. Hold on. Hold on. These are the days I will remember. These are the faces I need most. Everything changes, but I'll keep forever. These days I will remember. These days I will remember. These are the days I will remember.
Not sure why you hear the glitch, don't worry about it, because we're gonna email you back so you can watch it, it's entirely, it's really, it's really cute, you gotta watch it, you gotta watch it. The kids use a lot of the technology, so they decided to, you know, Mr. McGowan has, Dr. McGowan has this green room where you can travel and do different things, so they can get a really good look, you see the kids with Sasquatch, they surf, it's the cutest thing ever, so at the end of the night, we will forward this to all of you, please look at it, it is really adorable.
It will be on the website too, under our ELL department, so you can look at it here also. This is kind of a new fast, my apologies. My apologies. So this is our district star growth, and if you look, we're looking at growth, and we just have the last three years in which we have put our data into place, and at the end, kind of like we shared with you last year, we really want the red to be decreasing, as you can see, it is definitely decreasing. In two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, we had three hundred and fourteen students in the red, we had two hundred and eighty-five at the end of this year. So our new ELL curriculum is obviously working, so yay, it's great. For math, we're still working, but we are seeing growth, we went from three hundred and fifty to three hundred and forty-five, we're still looking for that red to be getting smaller, so we're implementing our new math curriculum this coming up school year, so we'll hopefully see some success within that, knowing that we're right where we need to be to ensure our student.
But overall, in both areas, the district is growing.
We are making great growth.
But kudos to our teachers, and we're doing well. People start to say, we had one hundred and ninety-five IEP needs this year. I know, right? I know. We had thirty new initial eligibility needs, and we reevaluate fifty-one students who need to continue to need for special ed. Eighteen point five percent of our student population has a IEP. Typically speaking, young is supposed to have less than ten percent of your population, so we do have the right to the state every year to let them know that we've exceeded what they would think is the cutoff point. However, we also are making some changes to our special ed department by moving more and more students to the regular ed curriculum if they can do it, but you have to stay conscious of the fact that this is not a segregated world, they've got to learn how to function across the board, so we're doing more co-teaching, we're getting our staff, our parent professional trained, because this is something I'm very passionate about, so I know that they are doing it, and they're doing it well, but I do know that eighteen point five percent, that is a big number, but I just, I just thought that the community, you should be aware of that, because special ed is a costly, it's not the most cheapest thing on the planet, but we are doing well, and our kids are doing well, so I'm proud of them too. With that, with having such a high ELL population, we had to find translators, so we introduced that last year, and we've gotten good at knowing how to use it, we had a lot of head health with it last year, but I think it's because we had to learn how to do it. Now that we've learned how to do it, we are, we're doing well, there's no parent in our district who can say they want someone to speak to them in their native tongue, that they are not getting what they're asking, that they're asking for, whether it was in their correspondence or telephone, written, so everything we go out now goes in Arabic, Spanish, and English, we even have a lovely French student, I just talked to him through an app. That's what I can do. For pre-K, so we do pre-K screenings every year, so in August, our goal is, we, another grant that we wrote for, we got awarded the grant, unfortunately, we had some struggles finding the teacher, but again, we're growing our own pre-K teacher at this point, so in August, when school starts, we'll be doing preschool screenings again, and we will be starting up and initiating our preschool program once again, because it's been about twelve, thirteen, if not longer, years in the district since the pre-K program has been here for the time of that. We also have an attendance team. When we started talking about MCF, which is our multi-tier support system, a lot of times people just think about academic growth, but it's more than that, it's also about the kids' behavior, so it's socially emotional, but first of all, I gotta get them here. So, and you know, we've had some kids who have, transparency has been an issue, so we've had to put together an attendance team, and we give reduced that, we are calling out, we're stopping by homes, we're being much more vigilant with the families, say, hey, why your child's not coming to school, we need him to learn, and if that has worked, we come together with the team, our ISC four, which is our South Cook Special Ed, it is our general regional education office that governs us, they've come out to help us train the staff on what we can do to get the parents and the kids to come to school, we're giving them initiatives, and unfortunately, some kids have to be rewarded to come here, it just is what it is, everybody's on with it, this is a happy place, so we're putting some kind of effort in to get them out here. We live in a time, we live in an age that now all schools are required to have safety meetings and threat assessment, hoping to never have to use it, but unfortunately, we can't do it in some instances, but we've got to have our staff trained, it's not the most pleasant thing we do, a lot of people getting their feelings about it, but it has to be done, it just has to be done. So everyone has been training hours, we've updated our plans, when we have our safety and our threat assessment meetings, we do invite the police department, we do invite the fire department, we all come together and we talk about what we need to do, and we walk through scenarios, and we actually do practice scenarios as well. Socially, emotionally, what are we gonna do? Well, we've learned that I commonly like to refer to them as our little people, and they feel they're always not intuitive of their emotions, or they don't know what to do with their emotions, which sometimes leads to behaviors that may not be necessary, some that we are in favor of, so the whole building of Nathan Hale has adopted the zones of regulation. Mr. Kent may or may not speak to that this evening, but the zones of regulation, basically teachers give what does it mean to be happy, what does it mean to be okay, how do you express your feelings, how do you articulate, it's gotta be a better way than going over a table, kicking over a chip, baby, you guys should do better, so that's what the zones of regulation does. I know that Ms. Little, Ms. Hill is gonna talk about the Heritage Housing, if you watched our graduation, you should, you would know what the Heritage Housing is. But what we've learned is that our kids have lost a sense of community, so what we've done, we've invested heavily in the Ron Clark Academy, this is the second year in the road that we've sent staff from Heritage to Atlanta to get trained by Mr. Ron Clark himself on how to implement the Ron Clark Academy. When the kids come here from fifth to eighth grade, they get into a house, whether it's yellow, green, pink, whatever, purple, whatever, they get in this house and they stay in this house. I know that's not the colors, the same colors, so they get into a house and they do, making the kids accountable to each other, teaching them how to talk to each other outside of social media, because at the middle school, whether we like it or not, we are competing with social media for the kids' attention. So it's doing well, and Ms. Little, Ms. Chloe's gonna talk about it, but also as a whole district, we're doing the seven mindset. I want to say all the boards have been introduced to seven mindsets, I believe I gave you all the books, but as a district, we're all doing it, because it is a growth mindset, we do have to think about the mental health of the staff. What is their purpose, helping them live their best life, so it's not just about the kids, I am trying to work on staff attendance, so sometimes, you know, staff get burnt out to teach them how to articulate as well. Low.
Okay, so with our live streaming, we have continued to do that, and the main reason I wanted to show this was even though we kind of are back full swing and things of that nature, we are opening up more and more seats at our events, our live streaming is actually growing even more, and we are getting those views from outside, I will tell you, you know from our sporting events, that even some other schools' parents are now starting to come onto our website so they can watch the games, because we're the only ones doing it, you know, so come on over. And then obviously, if you look, we have increased the number of things that we are live streaming, basically at the candy livestream, we are doing it, some of them have posted challenges, but we're getting there, and then obviously, as most of you have noticed, for those of you at home, you can't see because you're on the other end of it, but we have upgraded our equipment to help us, you know, do a better job and be able to do more streaming opportunities. The next thing is, we're always trying to increase the parent engagement at home, letting parents know what is going on here in the district, so at the scoop this year, our viewership from last year has actually over doubled where we were, so I think it's twice as many parents that have their eyes on what is going on, and looking towards the future, we're trying to increase that even more, but just knowing that we are doing things to make sure that our parents and our community are aware of what is going on. We've made students, I've been talking for the past two months now, we have made registration even easier for the majority of our community, so again, my board report right now, register. But we are trying to make things easier, we actually are, had a schedule right now on our registrations because of this, and so we're trying to make it, because that impacts our plan for next year drastically, when we get that last minute push, it's hard sometimes if we have to make some adjustments, so the earlier we get registrations, the easier we make it for our community, that we do. As Dr. Pettis did say, that we are unfortunately having to take steps in terms of crises and emergency procedures, the past two to three years, we've really taken a step up about putting some preventative measures in place, this past year, we did put more systems in place internally to help us with notifications, quicker response times. um, quicker response times, um, with more detail, um, for safety reasons, we don't go into all these details of what it is, uh, but just letting the community know that we are taking the steps necessary, uh, to make this building, or our district, uh, safe for all of our staff.
All right, good evening, everybody. Just a lot to share. I do love this, because it just gives you a sense of all the hard work that is going on for us, starting the year off with meeting and greets, giving the parents an opportunity to see the teacher face to face, but most of all, giving the child an opportunity to lose some of that anxiety, as well as for the teachers too. We found out it's been very successful. We do that in grades K through four, and parents turn out to a kindergarten, a little more in depth, as you can see, they do their beginning of the year assessment, um, but others, first grade to fourth grade, it's a quick drop off of materials, talking about expectations, and starting the year off positive. All right, and then, it said heavy lifting at the beginning, because this is where we prepared for the heavy lifting right here. Um, after the meeting reads take place, we have our open house for the parents to come in, to meet the teams, to talk about that curriculum that's going to be happening. But the first twenty to twenty-five days for us, it's all about building relationships. Yeah, academics are going on, but the fact of the matter is that, um, curriculum is suppressed, it is slowed down, as you see Miss Tech over there with the young man, um, on the right side of the screen, it's about building trust, it's about saying hello, it's about seeing the smile, it's about letting you know that you're okay and this is the place for you to be. Classrooms are usually filled, parents turn out, and it is a good time, and it is an awful busy time at the beginning of the year. Growing clubs and activities is what we continue to do. Uh, we have cooking club that, uh, just again, just teachers have been planning, trying to find the interest of those things that move the students forward. The math bowl team are some of the standbys. We redid the, or reimagined, if you will, the Nathan Hale Field Day, um, and it felt really good. We had parents come in, we had parent ambassadors, about forty-two of them, uh, that gave us their time. This was an all-day event, um, and believe me, we were tired at the end, but we were happy, and the kids were happy too. Going back, just before we go on, all of this begins to spin together, because you get to the smiles, you get to the fun, you get to the laughter. We believe by creating an environment that is exciting and that pulls and draws the kids to us. When your child does not want to be anywhere else but at school, because they don't know what's happening, or because there's a huge event that's being talked about, uh, that's gonna go on, then you know what? We did a home run for that day. Um, as you look through there, again, uh, some shots of cooking club. We had a sewing club that took place, this is the second year in this space, and can you go back one please? Uh, the young lady standing right in the middle, she's holding a pillow, they did some serious sewing with sewing machines, but this is what's so cool about it. If you look over to your far right, you see the three young ladies, and they have the green sashes on it. This was our first time ever of doing a spring, Nathan Hale Spring Concert for our choir group that was founded by Miss Lane and Miss Estrada. The sashes that they are wearing were made by the sewing club. And by the sewing. If you look up at the far left, again, just, it's about exposure, it's about creating the excitement and the energy. That at the very top is a ukulele club. We had about seven kids in the ukulele club. Uh, and again, that's the power of a teacher, Miss Estrada plays her ukulele for the kids. This happens every time they come to music, and there were kids that started going home. Some of them asked for a ukulele for Christmas. Some of them said, I just need a ukulele, and they began just getting interested, and it was just a positive piece. I have to point you to the middle, because that's our sign language club. This is the second year for them talking about something powerful. Those are echo teachers that are involved in that. I think it just shows the power of working together for the benefit of what we should be, and that's for the kids. Um, just very powerful things going on. And last, um, to the left on the bottom, you can see the choir with the sashes on, that was our first ever spring concert, and it was mighty, mighty good. Again, it just continues moving forward. I'm gonna start you at the right real quick. This was our winter carnival, the young lady that you see with the red, with her back turned is not being rude to you, she has a book that's open, that's Dr. Pettis right now, reading to the kids. Uh, Dr. Pettis, Dr. Rose, um, we even had, uh, Mr. Ford involved in that. We have brought the fire department in, Lieutenant Wright, if you look down towards the bottom, they, uh, brought in their curriculum, Learn Not to Burn, it piloted with our second grade class, and it was absolutely fantastic. If you look at the top right, that again, is very special stuff happening too, because again, you have to feel success, and you have to feel like you have some roots in this place. That is our Mason Day Parade, and it was taken, it took place, really, it was the creation of Miss Johnson's class, which is an echo class, and Miss Contino's class, which is the Nathan Hale second grade class. Well, Miss Johnson's class was having trouble making friends, socialization, so she reached out to Miss Contino, Miss Contino's kids came over to help them feel a little more comfortable throughout the year. They've worked on various things, uh, in order to really create a friendship, and this parade right here took place because of that, both classes working together. And as you can see, uh, police department, police department was in leading the preparation as well. Oh, you're good. I'm ready now.
Okay.
Uh, Science Day was brought up again. Aw, man, I want you to want to come to school, because we have the best showing house. And so here we go right now, this was Science Day all day, and I'll tell you what, I had some people kind of nervous about it, and I'm talking about some adult people. And at the end of the day, one of those people that were nervous about it said, you know what? Mr. Kent, this was absolutely wonderful. It was beautiful to see the kids interacting, but it was also beautiful to see us adults interacting too. The beautiful part about exposure is, if we want you to be excited about science, then don't you know we gotta be excited about science too? Um, that young lady at the bottom there made a trip, I'm standing on the other side, I'm working cafeteria, newbie, she came, tapped me on the back, and when I looked around, she kind of said, see, this is what happens on science. So again, it was just good stuff, from kindergarten all the way on up to fourth grade, and I'll tell you, if we had more time in the day, it would have continued. It was just a great feeling. Dr. Pettis had put that in the wind as we were trying to plant the seed, and we did. Uh, not only this, just so we show you how things worked out, this was the same day or the day after National Science Day. People were so excited about it. This year coming up, we will have a Mad Science Day in the first semester, and we will have our second Mad Science Day coordinated with National Science Day. It was just a good time all around. All right, and it's all good, it continues going on. Thank you all, uh, to me, learning and excitement, it's all spontaneous, and it just happens. Go back one since we were there, you don't mind? Right there, I want you to look at the very top, look at the smile, that's not a student right there, that's a teacher, we're still talking about Science Day. I want you to look in the middle right there, that young man, we were talking about being regulated, he has some things that he has been working on. This was a, um, spring signing concert in which Murray, Miss Murray's class worked with Miss Noble, and they signed some songs to the parents. The young man that I'm pointing out to with the mic, he stood there, he'd been working on a lot of issues, he recited the Nathan Hale pledge, and it was absolutely beautiful. Again, the, if you look to the top, uh, left corner, you'll see, uh, the choir from the Black History Program, and again, that kind of started Miss Estrada, and it started Miss Lane thinking about the possibility of a Nathan Hale Choir. Because of the fourth graders committed, at least three years in a row, they've been so committed to making this work, it's just beautiful. And then finally, at the bottom, you're not imagining anything, those are corn stalks. And right around that was the Kindergartner Spark Animal Night. Um, this just happens to be, we started out in the cafeteria, and I told folks, we were walking straight down the hall, in between, they saw cheeks that had been hatched by ELL, uh, by the ELL Department, they got an opportunity to see, uh, plants that had been planted with Miss Mesa, and some of the things that parents didn't know were going on during the day before they got there, and it was just excitement all the way through. All right. Um, this is the close out of the year, but you gotta go back for one, because I'm looking for, go back one more. Okay. That one right there. Um, perfect. Thank you very much, we were able to, like I said, here comes the eclipse. You know, when we tend to worry about our kids, honestly, oh, I wonder will they act right, oh, I wonder will they do this? I gotta tell you, the kids from kindergarten all the way to fourth grade, you know what the most important part was at that day? Being able to experience the eclipse. And they went out there and they did a wonderful job. Everybody, we talked about safety and being safe, and they did a wonderful job. Um, the young man, I wanna go back to the choir, you'll see him up at the top left, this is what this was all about, courageous young man right there, that picture I put there just on purpose, because the choir is out the way, the parents that build the cafeteria and the students are out the way, that young man is doing a solo. He is going to, he is going to fourth grade this year, that was just absolutely courageous. And then finally, again, the farm at all night, but I wanna bring your attention to the young lady that's in the middle. No names or anything like that, had the opportunity to work with her and Miss Alderfer, and we worked pretty much every morning we had a chance. What she's holding up right there is a spelling test. And let me tell you, success is so important, and once you get to smell it and touch it and taste it, even just a little bit of it, now you've got something that you could go back to. That young lady right there, and this happened probably around February, that is the first spelling test that she had passed, and she was just outstanding, I mean, that smile was wonderful. We took that picture, sent it to her mother, because success breeds success, and there's a feeling that you just cannot get rid of. And then finally, this was our, uh, getting down to the close, this was our Field Day, it involved everybody. Kudos off to, uh, the, the Field Day Committee, uh, kudos off to the parents that came, said there were forty-two. It was all day, all over the school, everywhere, and the kids were excited and loved it. They participated from the beginning to the end, walking out like some of the teachers at the end, but they did have smiles on their face, and that was a good time. All right. Uh, closing out, we had our, uh, kindergarten promotion ceremony, again, the fire department, Lieutenant Wright, they had just been all the way, with us all the way from the beginning to the end of the year, uh, they brought the fire truck out, we had parents everywhere, you could see the kindergartners getting ready to go to first grade, and I don't wanna leave out the early childhood program. Kudos, uh, to Dr. Pettis, to, uh, kudos to, um, Miss Sanders, and to Miss Mason, kudos to Miss Green, because I'll tell you what, we charged that program up and it was running with some energy, and the parents absolutely loved it. We have about several kids that are coming out of our preschool, going into our kindergarten, talking about feeding what we do. This was very exciting, the parents loved it, and the preschoolers had an opportunity to really experience what kindergarten is all about at various times, going in for playtime, going in for different things that kindergartners were doing, so when we start back in the fall, they have a little familiarity, familiarity with what we were doing. And there was one in there, come back one, I don't know whether I missed it or not, okay, I don't know what I'm doing here, because I didn't see it, there was one in there that simply said, thank you. And it had a picture of our cranes that were in front, and the construction were going on of Nathan Hale. And sincerely, huh?
I don't think it's in there.
Okay. I'm gonna explain it. Just thank you so much from the board, thank you for Dr. Pettis, thank you for Dr. Rose, to the admin team, period, to the board, thank you, because we are sitting in, sitting over there in a building that looks absolutely wonderful because of you. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Pettis, Senator Ford of the District. My name is Chloe Hill, and I will be filling in for Ms. Cameron for you. Thank you for having me. Here is the UOL presentation for Heritage Middle School. Every month, Heritage recognizes the academic growth and success for our students. Students are chosen by their teachers when received a swag bag filled with goodies. Congrats to all the winners in the past school year, and we hope that they will keep up the good work. This year, Heritage houses grew by leaps and bounds. Students were chosen to be leaders. Houses developed their own personalities and traditions, and they incorporated characteristics and attributes to the houses and the mazes. Dos, means friendship and envy, and represents our Lord's house. Valentia means bravery in Spanish and represents our yellow house. Amigé means wisdom and ego, and represents our green house. Creativity is awesome, and in Yoruba, hundred percent of purple house. We have four house days this year, one per quarter, then monthly house meetings where our readers celebrated achievements and planned activities for house days. Students were able to go on multitude of field trips when there was a house field trip for classroom. But overall, HMS students were given opportunities to have experiences outside of the classroom and had a great time doing it. Heritage had a great year in academics as well. HMS won second place in the South Hook Math Bowl and Regional Math Bowl. Heritage also won Scholasticum this year, and a fifth grader won second place in the painting, in the painting areas of the league as well. Seventh grade boys basketball went to state composition, boys and girls track also made it to state compositions when we started our second. Overall, we had fun times this school year, and our goal is to continue, grow, and expand, and have an amazing upcoming school. Thank you for having me, and have a super fantastic year.
Hello, good evening, uh, just real quick, uh, we have construction that we had last year for Nathan Hale. As you know, we have a new entrance, new expanded nurse's office, a garage for all the maintenance and, uh, the, uh, everything that they need. And, um, so at Heritage, uh, we replaced all the south half of the ductwork, ceiling lights and, and everything, just trying to keep these facilities clean, safe, neat, and updated and modern, uh, as best as we can. And to echo Mr. Kent's words earlier, thank you to the school board for all your support for all of these projects. And that's all I have. It just goes to that one. Maybe I did a double quick?
Don't worry about it. So we have, anyway, I'll come back. So we have to talk about this one. Whether we like it or not, it's, it's very relevant for us. So this one you see in front of you right now is Heritage Middle School. If you take a look at the, the five total days out, we had, um, a hundred and sixty-eight days in total of kids for special ed. Not a hundred and sixty-eight kids if you add up the days. But if you take a look at that grid, we identified, we broke it down by grade level, the number of students. So we got a couple of kids who, um, we had to give a lot of nurturing to, and maybe had to decide maybe this wasn't the best learning environment for them, but we still had to secure them a proper learning environment, but nevertheless... But nevertheless, that is the discipline, days out suspension that we're gonna head on to Middle School. And Nathan Hale, not so much. Nathan Hale, we're just trying to teach them how to be good students. So, we had eleven one-day out-of-school suspensions, three two-days out-of-school suspensions, so it's significantly different. And then we had one two-day bus suspension. So what we try to tell the kids, and it's the reality of it is, when you are younger, some of the behaviors and things you do is much more acceptable. Not that we like it, we tend to be a little bit more nurturing about it. The older you get, some of the things you do are grossly inappropriate, and choices have consequences, because they do impact others in a very much more significant manner. So that goes back to what I was saying about just doing Heritage House, which is trying to teach kids how to be more engaged, how to be a community. At Nathan Hale, doing the songs of regulation just to get them in tune with their feelings. I'll do it for you, Mr. Strader. We did our school finance thing, I don't know how, I clearly did that. With the school finance, we're still at a recognition point, we're still doing really good with our finances. So kudos to Mr. Strader for micromanaging all of us. Full service! So, for our lunches and everything, we still do not charge for lunches. We still have been given the afford, the opportunity to provide free lunches to every student in our district if they wanted. So this year, we did thirty percent, thirty-three percent of our students received breakfast, and seventy-one percent received lunches. So, what are we gonna do if we didn't do, we didn't really do all that much last year? So, with this upcoming school year, what are we going to do? We're not gonna stop going towards standard-based grade, and I alluded to that earlier. We need to work on our report card, we need to do another parent university, so make sure all of our parents don't want a core, or we can hardly explain it. Our MTSS program, we recognize that people hear some confusion on how it truly works. So, and that's just how, our multi-tier support system, again, that your social-emotional growth, your academic growth, your attendance, all of that plays with MTSS. So we are going to administratively, we recognize that we need to do a better job with our staff, and even with our parents, and helping them understand. So that's, that's a focus for us. We are still undergoing construction. It is time for our Teacher Action Plan, so that will, that will be taking place this school year as well. And then we're gonna continue growing our own educators, that's what we talked about, the teacher vacance sequence. Any questions? So that's us. We went on our administrative retreat recently. We went to go play men to golf. I swear Mr. McGowan had to go there and practice, because he beat us down that first round. And then Dr. Rose came behind him and won the second round, that perplexed us even more. But that's us.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
I don't care. Recommend a motion to approve KE transportation contracts for 2024-2025 school year as presented. Motion. Second. Okay, motion by Ambrose. Ambrose, yes. LaShur?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Teale? Thompson? Teale?
Yes.
Fellows, David, yes.
Take two. Recommend a motion to approve renewal of rent aside and rental for grades K through eight. A current progress monitoring program in exact and target practice in the amount of no more than seventy-five thousand. Pay out of title one.
Motion.
Thank you.
Motion by Ambrose, second by LaShur.
Ambrose, yes.
LaShur?
Yes.
Teale?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Teale?
Yes.
Fellows, David, yes.
Okay, three. Recommend a motion to approve a budget and levy timeline as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ambrose, second by Teale.
Ambrose, yes.
Teale?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Teale?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fellows, David, yes.
Recommend a motion to approve Justice Dance Catering LLC for 2024-2025 school service provider in the amount of four hundred ninety thousand six twenty-five as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ambrose, second by Terrell.
Ambrose, yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
LaShur?
Yes.
Teale?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
LaShur?
Yes.
Fellows, David, yes.
Recommend a motion to approve the purchase of fast home furniture from K.I. Inc. in the amount of thirty-two thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars for Heritage Middle School in grade classes as presented.
Motion by Teale, second. Second by Ambrose. Teale?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Teale?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
LaShur?
Yes.
Fellows, David, yes.
Recommend a motion to approve the administrative contract agreement for Miss Justice Dance with dance and physical services for 2024-2025 school year as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Ambrose. Second by Thompson. Ambrose, yes.
Thompson? Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Teale?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
LaShur?
Yes.
Fellows, David, yes.
Recommend a motion to approve the board of education meetings for 2024-2025 school year as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Teale, second by Terrell. Teale?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
LaShur?
Yes.
Teale?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fellows, David, yes.
Recommend a motion to approve Echo Board of Directors meeting minutes for May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, administrative contractors presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by LaShur, second by Thompson.
LaShur?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Teale?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Fellows, David, yes.
Recommend a motion to staff and approve the resignation with regret of Miss Riad Hackett, Technology Integration Specialist affected at the end of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Terrell, second by Ambrose. Terrell?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
LaShur?
Yes.
Teale?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Teale?
Yes.
Fellows, David, yes.
Recommend a motion to approve the employment of Mr. Pratt's former workers who affected June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, salary of fourteen dollars per hour.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Teale, second by Thompson. Teale?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Teale?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
LaShur?
Yes.
Fellows, David, yes.
Recommend a motion to approve the employment of Miss J. Mahono, fourth grade, he's a salary of fifty-one thousand two hundred forty-two dollars. Step three, affected 2024-2025 school year, intended for successful background check as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Teale, second by Ambrose. Teale?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
LaShur?
Yes.
Teale?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fellows, David, yes.
I'm gonna go to the cloud section. Give you the jar and stuff as soon as.
All the flavor.
Bye.